...Commission for December 10, 2014. At this point, I would like Mr. Padilla to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Amy, would you please take your roll call?
Commissioner Valenzuela.
Present.
Commissioner Padilla.
Present.
Commissioner Masio.
President.
Vice Chair Woods. Chair Muse.
Here. Okay, at this time, I would like to open public comments, those wishing to speak on any agenda item not listed on this agenda. Please step forward. Give me your name and address, and you have three minutes. No, hold on one second. Now again, this is on something that is not on the agenda item.
Okay. So I'll just ask, is the property on Foster Avenue and Sparlin on the, to divide the property? Is that on the agenda? Because I didn't get one of them.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further interests, I now close public communication. At this point, first agenda item is approving the minutes from November 12. Are there any items from the commissioners that needs to be addressed from the minutes? Seeing no, seeing no questions or concerns, I now accept the motion to accept the agenda item number one with no changes. I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any objections? Seeing none. Motion passes. Okay, now we go to our next agenda item. And we go to staff.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and Members of the Audience. The request before you is a request for a consideration of a tender parcel map to subdivide one lot into two lots within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone. Excuse me. The applicant is Lily Chow. Address is 13601 Foster Avenue. Case number PM1421. The subject is a rectangular shaped lot located on the southwest corner of Foster Avenue and Sparlin Avenue. Foster Avenue frontage is 79 feet, and Sparlin Avenue frontage is 165 feet totaling approximately 13,120 square feet of land area. There are three existing structures on the property, a single-family residence, a detached garage, and a guest house according to the Building Department's street file. Here's an arrow view showing the lot in question. Parcel one on the left will measure 82 feet in width by 79 feet in depth, which equals to approximately 6,478 square feet. While parcel two will measure 83 in width by 79 in depth, equalling to approximately 6,557 square feet. These two lots meet the minimum development standard for the R1 Single Family Residential Zone with regards to lot square footage. However, an existing structure encroaches upon minimum required setbacks, which will be addressed before the map is finalized. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC 1421 entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Adopting the Findings of Fact Approving a Tender Parcel Map, Approving the Subdivision of One Lot Into, Subdivision One Lot Into Two Lots for Residential Purposes Within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone, Pursuant to Table 152.10 in the City's Municipal Code. Location 13601 Foster Avenue. Applicant Lily Chow. Case number PM1421." This concludes staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions by the Commissioners to staff at this point? Okay, I have a question. Okay, currently, there are three existing buildings located on that facility, correct?
Correct.
And currently, the addresses are 1301 and 1301 and a half, is that correct?
Yes, from my understanding, there is a guest house. There is a detached garage that's located in this rear part. The driveway goes from this front all the way back. The existing, I'm assuming is the main house, lies right here, which, in this area, which, you know, it must be demolished before the map is finalized. And the guest house is in this area right here.
Okay, based on the diagrams and what you're saying, the guest house would be the one that would be demolished?
The, I'm presuming this is the main house and it lies, you know, directly.
That's what I meant to say, the primary house will be demolished. And then additional plans would be to expand the guest house, is that what's?
We have not received any summits with regards to any type of new development on this lot.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Are this going to be converted to lots with different addresses?
Yes, each one will have its own address.
Separate address?
Yes.
Divided line? Each one going to have their own driveway?
Yes, one will have its frontage on Sparlin and the other one will have, presuming will maintain its foster address.
Any other questions?
Is there any plans submitted yet for any type of construction to go on there or?
No, we have not received any submittal.
But the intent is to build some housing?
Yeah, well that's.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much. At this point, I will now open public communication on this agenda item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, you may step forward. Please give your name and address. And you have three minutes to speak.
Hi, my name is Rosie Hernandez and our address is 13615, excuse me, Foster Avenue, which is directly on the east side of this property. And we have many concerns about the different types of buildings that's taking place in Baldwin Park. It's my understanding that there is an ordinance that we are, that your Planning Commission, I believe, passed, where there is, it is prohibited at this time, it's been stopped. And there's issues where other residents have come to this same concern because they have been told they cannot divide because of this ordinance. And therefore, I believe if that is correct, then there is no proposal that can move forward. Why does that concern us? Because at our corner, property on the corner of Foster and Sparlin, if you, if you understand the property where it's showing the design here or the landscape of where the property lays, it's already obstructing views all the way around. We feel like a giant is just ready to swallow the small residence homes that are in that vicinity. Not to mention a lot of concerns that there's a lot of drug trafficking in that corner. And there's, it's just changed a lot of the dynamics in the neighborhood because of it. I can just see a future proposal for even some kind of development like a two-story huge mansions that are being built right in the middle of neighborhoods. And now we would have apartments on the corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Foster. Directly behind them, you have more units that are obstructing. So we look like a little tiny ant compared to these giant buildings that are behind us. Now we're talking across the street, we're being boxed in. I would like the council to consider this. But mostly that, that if it's ordinance that there is no dividing properties, I stand with that first. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else here speaking on this agenda item? Seeing no further interest, I now close public communication on this agenda item. And open up to the Commissioners, any questions by the Commissioners? Or any concerns?
I got a, I live close by, not too far from where we're at. I've noticed that there is two big buildings, lots have been split up already. That's the two big buildings right across from Servista. And the condos closer to Baldwin Park Boulevard. And I also look at that property and it's really not a nice sight to look at either because it's kind of bare as it is right now. And they got like rentals in the back and so forth. I don't know who rents here, but you know, I know your concerns, but I see, I don't know if I see improvements or, I would like to see the plans for the future as well, I'd like to see. I'd like to see.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other concerns or concerns?
Yeah, I have a question for Amy. What this speaker, he spoke about an ordinance about not dividing? I'm not.
I, probably what the ordinance that she's referring to is the flag lot ordinance, which several years ago, the council felt that flag lot subdivisions were no longer, you know, they didn't feel that they really worked for the city any longer. And so what they did is they outlawed that specific type of subdivision where your lot looked like a flag. You had a 15-foot wide drive approach that went back to a bigger lot. These are not, how this is proposed here is not a flag lot subdivision. So this meets our minimum width and depth development standards for a lot. So most likely, that's probably what she's talking about.
So there's nothing wrong with this project?
It meets the.
Beating code?
No, it does not. It does meet the current development standards that we have in effect right now, yes.
Alright, thank you. One quick question. Based on the information from the proposal, you indicated that one address would be on Sparlin, and the other one would be on Foster?
That's correct. Each lot has street frontage. The second lot proposal, one on the right, will be directly facing Sparlin. So yeah, it is assumed that it will be issued a Sparlin address.
Alright. Alright, thank you.
The understanding I get is no more flag type long driveways for the future in Baldwin Park?
That is correct.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, just for, for people's information, this is only the subdivision of the lot. There are no plans that have been submitted for the development, but they must follow our R1 standards.
Correct, and this item is just a request for the subdivision?
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion to move.
It's PC 1421.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any objections? Seeing no objections, item 1421 has been passed. Next agenda item?
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, Members of the Audience. This item before you is a request for a conditional use permit for the off-site sales of beer and wine in conjunction with a convenience store. And it's actually the Chevron Gasoline Station Combination McDonald's at 3160 Baldwin Park Boulevard. As you can see, there are two lots actually that make up the request. The total land area is approximately 50,000 square feet. And it is part of the overall, like, the overall Target Shopping Center, which is about, about 22 acres. And the center, as you're probably well aware, includes Target, Food for Less, and Office Max. There are a lot of entitlements on this property, conditional use permits, specific plans, things of that nature, which are detailed in Table 2 in your report. The conditional use permits include drive-throughs for both Taco Bell and McDonald's, and then also other off-site sales of alcohol for both Target and Food for Less. This is actually a request for a brand-new license at this location for the off-site sale of beer and wine. This is actually the site in itself. This is the fueling canopy with the eight fueling stations. This is the McDonald's, Chevron McDonald's building. And then this is the drive-through. And then obviously, the parking for the area. There are really two primary entrances, entrance areas right over here, which is facing this parking area over here, and then this, these two doors which are facing this parking area over here. The applicant is proposing new surveillance cameras. It'll look towards both sets of doors, and then also another camera here, which will focus on the cooler where the proposed beer and wine will be held. And as you can see, these are the elevations. It's Spanish Mediterranean architecture, tile roof, stucco building, parapets. That's where we are. So as the Commissioner, as the Commission's aware, the City Council recently adopted Policy Number 028, which is entitled "Development Standards for Alcoholic Beverage Sales." This policy includes two primary development standards, which are, one, that the maximum allowable floor area for the display of alcoholic beverages is no more than 3% of the overall floor area. The second standard is that if a new off-site outlet, which is what this is, this is a brand-new, never-sold-alcohol-here-before location, excuse me, has less than 10,000 square feet of floor area, which Chevron does, that the applicant will locate an existing off-site license within the city from another location to this new location. Based upon the submitted plans from the applicant, they do not exceed the maximum allowable floor area. If you, let's go back here. They're only proposing this area right in here, and that area is less than 3% of the overall floor area. Additionally, the applicant has entered into escrow to purchase the former beer and wine license that was held by Fresh &amp; Easy at 1640 Puente Avenue. However, as the Commission is aware, any type of alcoholic beverage sales we know is controversial. In this specific instance, oh, here's an aerial of the, in this specific instance, this is the census tract 4047.02. This census tract, according to the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, is over-concentrated. And what I've done here is I've put the locations of where the existing sales outlets are. This one, oh, forget this. Where are we here? There we go. This is the 7-Eleven over on Best, Smart &amp; Final, CVS, Target, and Food for Less. And then the little smiley face here is Chevron. Proposed Chevron. So there are currently five locations that have an off-site license. And this would be the sixth one, and as such, because this is an over-concentrated census tract already, the Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control would require, should the Planning Commission go with a resolution of approval that they issue, they include in the resolution a finding of public convenience and necessity. So at this time, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing, receive any public comment, close the public hearing, and direct staff to bring back to the next regularly scheduled commission meeting one of the following. One, a resolution of approval approving a conditional use permit and adopting the requisite findings of fact, conditions of approval and statement of public convenience and necessity for the off-site sales of beer and wine in conjunction with a convenience store, which is Chevron. Or two, bring back a resolution of denial, denying the conditional use permit while adopting the requisite findings of fact for the off-site sales of beer and wine in conjunction with a convenience store. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much, Amy. Are there any questions by the Commissioners to staff at this point?
Yeah, I, I'm all for Baldwin Park business, as everybody knows. But when I'm looking at this, I'm wondering, is this going to just take business away from some other existing sale of beer and wine? Or I don't see it generating new business. So all it's doing is taking business from the other businesses. That's, that sounds.
Understood. And the applicant may be able to elaborate on this a little more. My understanding and assumption with this is that it is a convenience. It is a convenience. If you come, get gas, you want to go in, get some chips, oh, I need, I want a six-pack of beer or whatever. It's more of a convenience than anything.
Amy, I have a question in regards to the number of outlets that you have indicated on here. The 7-Eleven on Best. Isn't there a liquor store right there too?
7-Eleven.
Not that I'm aware of.
Right on the corner, right next door to the 7-Eleven.
We didn't have one, and there's not one noted in the census tract.
Okay. Okay.
Do I need to send code out there? Okay.
I got another question. Isn't there another proposal for another liquor license coming up with Target?
That one was already approved.
Already approved.
And actually, it was not a new license. Target had, their request was to upgrade from beer and wine to distilled spirits. That does not, that doesn't increase the overall number, it just changes the type.
That would make it five then, right?
Still five, yes.
Any more questions to staff? Alright, thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
At this point, I will now open public communication regarding this agenda item. Those wishing to speak on this item, please step forward, please give me your name and address. And you have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, my name is Larry Tidball from Stantec Architecture, 38 Technology in the City of Irvine. Representing Chevron here tonight. I also have the, essentially the district manager for Chevron in this area, who's going to answer any operational questions that might come up. But I'll speak first. Chevron is requesting the sale of beer and wine at this site. It's a commonly sold item in their convenience stores throughout the state of California. They've gone to the effort of purchasing another license from within the city to transfer here. So yes, it is a transfer, but you know, Fresh &amp; Easy is getting out of that business in this location. So it moves the license to Chevron's location. You know, and Chevron would like to add this product mix to the store. It's something that people expect to purchase in a convenience store. And if you look at the other licenses in this tract, there's a Food for Less, the Target, the Smart &amp; Final, and the CVS. None of them are convenient locations. They're bigger boxes, you have to go in and walk through a big store, maybe stand in a line of people purchasing many other items. And the Chevron customer expects, if they're going to make a quick stop-in, that to get gas, they might like to purchase some snack food items and say the six-pack of beer in one quick and easy stop. So, and that's the reason for the request, is it's an expected item. If a customer can't purchase the six-pack here, they may end up purchasing their gas someplace, maybe in another city. So the store loses not just the sale of the beer, but all the other things that go with it. So that's the reason for the request is to add this. Chevron is a responsible operator in the community. They do this type of sales in many locations throughout the state of California. This store is run by Chevron Corporation as one of their flagship company-owned stores. It's, most gas stations in the state are franchised individual owner-operators. But this is a station that Chevron runs themselves to set the standard for all their operators in terms of how the quality of the operation is done. So Chevron has a lot of criteria to make sure that the typical problems that could crop up from alcohol sales don't happen. To make sure there's no loitering, that there's no graffiti, that if there's any problems, they're calling the police right away. They have very strict policies on how to manage to make sure that there's no sales of alcohol or tobacco to minors. And to deal with the kinds of problems that oftentimes crop up with alcohol sales. But they don't want that to happen in any community where they're doing business. So they have very good policies to make sure that the store is well-run and that this type of sale does not cause any problems in the community. Some of those procedures are detailed in the attachments to the Commission packet. I'm here and the Chevron managers, district managers here that can talk about the exact procedures if you've got questions on it, but.
Sir, your time's up.
If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
I take concern about having a McDonald's and with families and children and people that go and want to have family time. If it's, if I am correct, there is maybe one to those two entrances that this lady talked about into Chevron. To go, you have to go through there to get to McDonald's. There is no entrance, a separate entrance for McDonald's. So now we're, now we're putting, I believe, more families and children at risk. Convenience, yeah, for the alcoholic or anybody who wants to, who wants a drug, I mean, excuse me, an alcoholic beverage. But then you have that, the proximity is just like within walking distance to get a beer, to get a six-pack, to get a cigarette. They're sold, like they just said, in Target and across the street and not far from, you're talking five other locations. We seriously should consider, I mean, do we really want to consider one more place of alcoholism around children especially? I mean, that's really close. I never understood how they put, you know, a McDonald's next to a Chevron. And I still, I really don't understand why you would put just one to two entrances through the Chevron to get to McDonald's, where you want to have, you know, it's mostly children. Families go there, but you're not going to have your, you know, just one guy that's, oh, have a beer and a hamburger too. And that's not going to happen. That usually doesn't happen. So I would, I would have major concerns to having that license be issued to this location. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Martin Decembert from Brer, California. I'm the business consultant for Chevron. And what I want to say is that we do operate other co-brands with McDonald's that have alcohol. We partnered with also Jack in the Box. We're very responsible. We're a very responsible retailer. We do have, all our customer service representatives, managers who run the site, they're required to go through certification every year. We do have a program where the stores are shopped frequently every quarter, and we do have very strict disciplinary actions if anybody sell, sell alcohol to a minor. But not only that, we have that, but also when we do have state and local things, we normally pass them. So, once again, this is for the convenience of our customers, because they do ask all the time, you know, because we are a convenience store, and while we don't have alcohol, so I have to say, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Ann Kalman, 13811 Kenmore Avenue, Baldwin Park. I think it'd be kind of convenient. Folks stop in there for gas, go in, pick up six-pack up or twelver. Sometimes that bumper-to-bumper traffic on the 10 going into L.A. can get pretty bad. Seems like at least a sixer. You know what I mean?
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, prior to closing the public communication, I'd like to ask the gentleman, the district manager, or the...
Yes, sir.
Just a couple of questions on my behalf. How long has that facility been in that location?
Well, at this point, I'm not sure how long it's been. I just moved, I just took over the facility, I just took over the job a year ago.
Okay.
Chair, since 1996.
Okay, since 1996. Okay, since 1996, the opportunity has been there prior to the approval of the other facilities, CVS, and particularly Food for Less, to obtain a license, a alcohol license. And this wasn't done subsequently at this point. We now have five other locations that pretty much saturate this area. And why wasn't it done prior?
I think I can answer that question. At the time this station and McDonald's was built in 96, Chevron did request alcohol at that time, but the overconcentration had already existed. As time went by, the city adopted the policy that with a convenience-type store, if a license was purchased within the city and transferred, that then an applicant like Chevron could request to add the alcohol sales. So the Fresh &amp; Easy license was going to become available, so Chevron has purchased that license to transfer here. Chevron couldn't ask for this in the interim years without being able to purchase a license because of the city policy and the existing overconcentration. So that's why the timeliness of this now is because of the ability to purchase and transfer a license. So Chevron has, in this application, followed all the policies that the city has adopted through the city council to allow additional licenses in an overconcentrated area through that purchase, but they couldn't have done it previously.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions from any commissioners?
I have a question. I've been in that Chevron before, and I'm just curious to know how many refrigerator doors are we talking about that they're going to be adding in for, for beer? Because it is a confined space that we're talking about, and 3% from just visually looking at it would only consist of two, if anything, two doors, two refrigerator doors.
My understanding is that they're using existing refrigerator space. These would be the two doors, if you're, if you're facing them, the two doors...
On the right?
To the right, yeah. No new refrigerator units are going to be added or anything like that.
Okay, I don't have much of a question. It's more like a comment or a concern. We do already have five existing locations within the area that are selling already alcohol. I don't know how I would feel about a McDonald's location selling, and particularly just because there's a lot of kids that are there. We already have the Walgreens, we already have the Smart and Final, Target, and Food for Less within the same square, pretty much intersection. And I, I go to that shopping area a lot, and I don't particularly see the Walgreens busy a lot. When it is, it's usually the pharmacy area, not much of the convenience side. And like one of the residents had mentioned, if you're going to be there, they're mostly going to have to go and put gas. So walking a few steps to just get into a store to buy your beer or wine, it's not going to hurt. After all, we are encouraging our community to move around and do some little bit of activities, so getting out of your car and walking a few steps into the store to get your wine or alcohol, I don't think would be a major issue.
Thank you very much.
One more thing I wanted to add. If I'm not mistaken, there's a red section on the northeast corner of where the CVS is at. We're missing the liquor store that's right there in that corner.
Different census tract.
Okay.
We're only focusing on...
I see.
This specific census tract.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see the pedal area.
I see the red line now.
Okay. Amy, could you please give us the, the two options that we have before us?
Yes?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
The two options that I provided the commission are, one, to provide a resolution of approval approving the conditional use permit, adopting the requisite findings of fact, conditions of approval and statement. And this would be brought back at the next meeting, or the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, for the off-site sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a convenience store, or bring back to the next regularly scheduled council, commission meeting, a resolution of denial, denying the conditional use permit, adopting the requisite findings of fact, for the off-site sale of beer and wine in conjunction with a convenience store.
All right, thank you. At this point, are there any more, anyone else interested in making any comments on this agenda item?
I'd like to ask one question. The store itself and McDonald's, the separation, has no connection with McDonald's, or you can go right through, walk with your beer through McDonald's? Is this, I looked at the plans, and I couldn't tell whether there is an exit that goes into McDonald's, or is that directly straight back to the gas station?
Jerry's actually going to take the PowerPoint back to the floor area. So all of the cross-hatched area is McDonald's. So pretty much you would walk through from those doors right into there.
That's an exit going into the store?
That's an entrance going into the area where McDonald's is.
So it is possible that a person could buy beer and go sit down at the table, have food, and wait till he eats, and then go back to his car with the beer?
Unless they have their internal policing there, that could be a case, that could be a possibility, yes.
I've seen other stores, gas stations that have liquor and so forth, separate from the eating areas, and usually there's an entrance, a door, a swinging door, or something, or a cashier right there where, you know, you can't go into the eating areas with a beer. I just wonder if that's part of the planning? I don't see nothing there, that's why I say, I don't see anything where there could be a person there, or a cashier, or...
At this point, the only request here in front of us is the request for the liquor license, nothing in regards to changes of structure or any type of amendment to the facility. So at this point, is there anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I will now close the public communication, and I will accept, I will make a motion to ask staff to provide a resolution of denial for this agenda item.
Mr. Chair, and that would include the comments made of overconcentration, the desire for walkability in the area, the comments concerning the connection from the, from the convenience store directly into the McDonald's, the incompatibility with a McDonald's, and no finding that you can make that there is a necessity that this item go in? Because that's the A-B-C rule. You have to find for a necessity because it's overconcentrated. So would those facts be included in this resolution?
Yes, they would. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, at this point, Amy, we have a motion, an approved motion, to provide the commission with a resolution of denial for this agenda item. Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience. This item before you is a request for a recommendation to the city council on, one, a zone change to apply the specific plan or SP overlay to assessor's parcel number 8552-8552-017-004, which is that property right there. Two, a specific plan amendment to facilitate a 51-unit detached gated condominium project and new 69-foot-tall wireless communication facility in the form of a monoeucalyptus tree. Three, a tentative tract map to consolidate 12 lots, as you see here, into one lot for a 51-unit residential condominium subdivision, and one lot for the existing wireless facility. And four, a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact. As you can see, the subject properties are located at the southwest corner of Merced Avenue, and together, they total approximately 3.6 acres. The area is flat. The structures that are there have been utilized for police department training, fire department training, and they are slated for demolition in the near future. In quick summary, like I mentioned, the unit, the, the project is a 51-unit detached residential project. And this is the tract map, it's kind of difficult to see, but there are 51 units there. This area right here, along Baldwin Park Boulevard, is where the proposed wireless facility will be relocated. And this is what the project will look like with the units. And this is the little wireless facility over here. The main entrance is on Merced Avenue. There is an entrance over here, however, this is not an entrance that is accessible to the public. This is for fire department and emergency access only. Each one of the units will have its own two-car garage. Each unit will have its private open space area, and there is a, about a 2,700-square-foot common open space area right here. The project is gated. The gate is not across the front here on Merced, however, there is one gate here and one gate over here, which is not directly visible from Merced Avenue. So it does also provide ample room, so should somebody come in, oh, it's gated, oh, I need to turn around. It does provide for that, as opposed to backing up onto Merced Avenue. And there's also, over on this side, there's actually two parallel parking spaces as well. This is a preliminary landscape plan that shows the landscaping that's going to be provided, the samples of the trees, the shrubs, the bushes that they're doing. And then they also provide a general preliminary park design here. This is, I only put in samples of two of the units. As part of your exhibit, you were provided with all the floor areas and all the elevations. This is one of their smaller two-story units. It's three bedrooms, two and a half bath. Obviously, you can see a two-car garage right here, and then three bedrooms. This is one of their larger units. This is actually the largest unit. It's four bedrooms, three stories, three and a half bathrooms, approximately 1,900 square feet. The one before was about 1,600 square feet. And this one is three stories as well. This is actually another plan that we have from the wireless company, showing the location of the wireless area adjacent to Baldwin Park Boulevard. This is actually an aerial view without the stealthing or the monoeucalyptus branches, excuse me. And actually, this shows, there are two carriers, two carriers only, AT&amp;T and Verizon, that will be permitted as a part of this. Currently, right now, there is one carrier that's located in the steeple of the, of the existing church. That will be relocated over onto the new wireless monoeucalyptus along Baldwin Park Boulevard. And then this is what it's proposed to look like. And as you can see, the monoeucalyptus is proposed to be about 69 feet tall. It will accommodate both the carriers, and it does meet FCC standards. And then there will also be, we're also going to require numerous companion trees of a specific height, so you don't have little five-gallon trees that will take years to mature to be up to the standard in this area. So what I'm going to do right now is I'm going to talk a little bit about the entitlements that are before you. As I stated before, the zone change, we have one property that does not have the specific plan overlay. We need that parcel to have the specific plan overlay to be included within this project. What happened is, is that the original specific plan that was approved in 2006, the applicant at the time didn't have ownership of this property. However, now, this current applicant has purchased that property and wants to include it in the entitlements as part of the overall development. The next item I want to discuss a little bit about is the specific plan amendment. As I mentioned, the original specific plan was adopted in 2006. And at that time, the project in the specific plan was for 12 detached townhouse-style units, a two-story multi-use building at the corner of Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard that would be retail, commercial, and then also a private educational use. And then there would also be two separate wireless facilities instead of one. With the current proposal, as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing to eliminate the retail, commercial, and private educational component in favor of an entirely residential detached project in addition to one wireless facility that would house both the, both of the carriers. So if you look at Table 3 on the beginning of Page 4, that shows a comparison of the current underlying zoning designations on the property, the existing specific plan, SP 06-01, and then what is proposed as part of the amended specific plan, SP 14-01. The specific plan also includes design guidelines, which identify a modern type of architecture and straight lines, as you saw earlier in my presentation. And then again, the, the units vary between three bedrooms, two and a half bath at 1,600 square feet, going up to three stories and 1,945 square feet. And as stated a little bit, here we go up here, the wireless facility will be 60... the wireless facility will be 69 feet tall and stealthed in the form of a mono-eucalyptus tree. And that actually has been vetted over, just to give you background, vetted over several meetings with the City Council on the design of this facility. We wanted to make sure that we got it right. So again, moving on, the next item that we have is the tract map. The tract map portion involves, as I mentioned, the consolidation of all of those 12 lots that you saw into one lot, and then the subdivision, the condominium subdivision into 51 separate dwelling units, each with separate ownership. Additionally, there will also be the 1,600 or so square-foot area that the mono-eucalyptus will occupy. And as you well know, as you've read through the staff report, Table 4, as you know, when we receive tentative tract and parcel maps, we send those to all outside entities, utility companies, for comment and concerns and questions. We receive comments back from LA County Fire. As you well know, we do not bring any map to you without the blessing of the fire department and approval to move forward with the public hearing. And then we also receive comments from the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. All of those comments, concerns are included as conditions of approval in addition to the city's own concerns and comments and conditions of approval, specifically from the Public Works Department relating to, you know, how you're going to do, you know, repair any broken curb as part of the construction process or things like that. And as you well know, we always include a condition that says, you know, if the fire department comes back later with another condition, you're going to have to meet it. Or if Verizon comes in and says you have to put in FIOs or something like that, then the applicant will have to do that as well. So this time, and please bear with me in reading the recommendation, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing and, following the public hearing, adopt a resolution, PC 14-22, entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park, recommending that (a) the City Council approve the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact;[739.20][739.20](b) adopt the findings of fact and approve the zone change;[742.72][742.72](c) adopt the findings of fact and approve the specific plan amendment, SP 14-01;[748.16][748.72](d) adopt the findings of fact and approve the tentative tract map, TM 721-95, to consolidate 12 lots or portions thereof into no more than two lots for a detached 51-dwelling-unit residential condominium subdivision and wireless communications facility within the R1 Single Family Residential Zone and MU2 Mixed-Use Two Zones." The location is the southwest corner of Baldwin Park Boulevard and Merced Avenue, and includes Assessor's Parcel Numbers Map Book 8552-017 and Parcel Numbers 004, 068, 069, 070, 071, 072, 073, 074, 075, 076, 077, and 078. The applicant is KLL Investments LLC. The case numbers are Z-554, SP 14-01, and TM 721-95. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Amy. At this point, are there any questions from the commissioners to staff?
Question. Looking at the parcel maps and looking at everything, reviewing everything, what's going to be the spacing between each of the units? And would there be some kind of privacy in between?
Actually, what this is called is, this is a zero-lot line development. And you might think, "Oh, scary, zero, no setback," which is fine. What you have is, you have, for example, I'll take this lot right here. This lot, right here, this side, this wall of the garage in the unit, that is the property line. There are no windows along that side, nothing. You're thinking, "Oh, how's that going to impact this guy to the south?" He actually, his entrance and everything, he is set back from that wall between eight and 10 feet to allow, that's his entrance side. That's where he would have his, you know, front patio and entrance to his dwelling unit. So on one side, you have a zero-lot line. On the other side, you have between eight and 10 feet.
Any other questions?
Yeah. I wrote some notes down, that's all.
That's okay.
Okay, how about the setback from the streets? Would there be walking space in between the main streets and inside the complex where people can walk around in, and, you know, for those who, residents who like to move around and out and about?
Well, as I mentioned before, this is a gated facility. There are not sidewalks within the gated community. But however, there are sidewalks, obviously, around Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard. It's not anticipated, given, you know, if you look at this, there's not a lot of long straightaways. You're not going to be able to go very fast. And then also, too, remember, this is gated. Pretty much the only people that are there are the people that are there or their guests. So I live in a complex like this. I walk through the driveway all the time.
Okay. And how about outside, like on the main street? Would there be more of a setback for the sidewalks, for people who are regular?
Actually, they're going to be using the existing sidewalk. But if you look up here, this is Merced, and you could see there is, there's obviously going to be a wall along Merced. They're going to be landscaping the parkway within the area. But the house is also set back, too. Okay. As you can see right here.
I got a few questions. The exit on Kenmore?
Yes.
Strictly, emergency, is that what the fire department?
Emergency access only. Fire, ambulance, yes.
Okay, the entrance to Verizon and AT&amp;T, I think it was, is that a driveway there, too?
There is no access off of Baldwin Park Boulevard, if I recall correctly. Okay. Access would be specifically through here, and the access would be from the inside.
So Verizon would have to come through the entrance to get to their facility?
Yes.
To maintain their equipment and all that?
Yes, they would.
There's also a generator there, virtually generators?
Yes, there is. And those are primarily used, obviously, when...
How big are the generators?
I'm sorry?
Just what size are the generators and how much?
Trees or size?
Are they contained in the building, or?
They're within, there is a block wall that will surround this. I believe it's between six and eight feet in height.
I'm concerned, when you have a generator, is that strictly for emergency, or is that to...
Emergency only.
Emergency only?
Yeah. We're actually seeing a lot of the wireless carriers install emergency generators within their wireless facility enclosures.
But they are enclosed for, it doesn't bother the tenants or the homeowners?
No. And actually, the applicant, too, can also expand on this. But no, like I said, it's in an emergency situation.
So they do test them like once a month, or whatever time they do? And at what times do they test them, or? As far as, I'm more concerned about the people that live there, if it's done in the morning and night, or? Is there times that you do the maintenance and testing on them?
We do not have that written in to the CCNRs or everything. Obviously, that's going to have to be disclosed as part of the purchase process to any potential buyers that want to buy that are nearby. For example, this property over here, or this one over here, or even the ones across the street.
Back to the emergency again, is that the fire department? Can the fire department go through there in?
Through...
In case of emergency?
Yeah, they will have access. There will be an access box.
Interested to get in in case of emergency, or ambulances or so forth?
Emergency access only.
And who's going to maintain the interior of that property there? Is that going to be?
The homeowners association.
And will there be ample parking for guests inside the facility, so they don't park in the streets?
There are 18 guest parking stalls, which meets the minimum requirement in the code. Actually, I believe it exceeds it.
The other concern I had is the people that live around that area. I talked to some during that, you heard something about that this weekend? Is the parking in front by Kenmore? Are people going to be parking there on Kenmore? It's a concern I had.
They sure have to take a long walk around.
It's only an exit, but can they go into there?
No, there will not be a pedestrian gate or anything.
Walking or anything?
No.
Okay.
Now, the parking, I know there's going to be 18 guest spaces available. Would those require some kind of a parking pass, or is it a first-come, first-sho basis?
Because I live in a complex such as this, I'm actually going to require that their CCNRs include that there won't be any parking in the guest parking stalls without a permit issued through the homeowners association between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. What that does is that discourages people from using the guest parking stalls as their own. And obviously, those parking, there should be some limits on, you know, you can't get like 12, 30-day parking passes.
I live in condos right now, and we have spaces like that. And we have people who have more than two cars, and they, right away, they're running home to park the cars, and we have to park in the street, so...
Right, yeah. And that's going to be something that's going to be included as part of their CCNRs.
Okay, okay.
I had a question. My concern would be on Merced. Vehicles going, turning left into Merced, I'm sorry, into the structure from that side, yes.
Okay.
Is there any kind of traffic modifications being done to have like a center broken line section where they can actually have a right-of-way to turn left?
Actually, that's being...
Without blocking traffic?
That's actually being handled through the Public Works Department. One of the great things about this project is that you can actually turn here, and the tail of your car will not be hanging out into the public right-of-way. There's ample enough room to come in. And if, you know, you see the gate and you can't get in, that you can actually turn around. So that's actually as part of the conditions from the Public Works Department that they've looked at.
I actually like that because it's a really busy street, and less accidents, the better.
Any other questions?
I agree on that. That is a very busy street. That's where that one curve comes in. There's a lot of accidents right there. As a matter of fact, a big accident happened not too long ago. But I would recommend that men to look into putting a stop line, or light, or a stop sign somewhere there, because it makes a big curve, and people just race around, or nowhere to get into that complex when they race down the street.
One last question. On the eucalyptus tower that's being built, my question would be, who puts in the stipulation that only Verizon and AT&amp;T are allowed on there? Is that the city, or?
That would be something that would be included within the CCNRs in the agreement between AT&amp;T, Verizon, and the homeowners association. The homeowners association owns the common area there, which includes the drive aisles and the guest parking area. So as part of the agreement between the homeowners association, or right now, the applicant, and Verizon and AT&amp;T, that is all worked out. And just so y'all are aware, planning and the city attorney's office has to approve the CCNRs before the map can record.
All right. Mr. Woods?
Yeah, I have just a comment on the parking. I'm a victim of a housing project parking overflow. I haven't parked in front of my house for two years. I have to walk two blocks to get to my house because of the apartment buildings across the street take up all the parking spots along the street rather than park in their facility. I noticed in this facility, a four-bedroom house will have two parking spots. Realistically, we all know that that family with a four-bedroom house is probably going to have more than two cars. And I see there's no parking anywhere except in the garage. You have to pull off the street, off of your pad. You can't even park on your pad in front of your garage. You have to open the door on your way in, I suppose. So there will be no, I just pity the people on Merced and Kenmore. They will never see a parking spot again.
Any other questions?
I have a question, well, more like a comment, on the aesthetic part, which is more, you know, I looked over all the plants and everything you guys are going to be using for the project, and I actually like them. Different from what we're used to seeing around here in Baldwin Park, which is a big plus for me. I'm really big on making Baldwin Park more green. We need more trees around here and more different kinds of plants. House-wise, will there be a tree in every other house, or in every house? Or how would that be spread out?
I believe so, there will be. I do know that the council, when we've taken this project to study session, really wants to see a lot of landscaping. And as I mentioned before, the homeowners association will be taking care of the front portion up until the little entrance gate. There will be like a little three-foot-high entrance gate where you could go in to the front door.
All right, Amy, thank you.
I got one more comment for Amy for City Baldwin Park. Since you mentioned the fact that you're going to have restricted parking inside the facility there, I know we talked about it before in our regular meetings, but the restricted parking around certain areas, no overnight parking. That would solve a lot of problems for 12 to 6. We've talked about it many times before, and nothing's come out of it yet. But I would like to see no parking between 12 and 6, areas where there's apartments and so forth, or all throughout Baldwin Park. I don't really take care.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Amy, thank you. At this point, I will now open this agenda item up to public communication. Those wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward. Please give me your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Powers, and my address is 1814 West Cardiff Road in the city of San Dimas. And I'm with Mega Five Partners, the developer of this property in Baldwin Park. We'd like to thank you very much for your time this evening, and would also like to thank staff for the tremendous amount of hard work and effort that they put into this project and the opportunities that we had to meet with the city council. If there's any questions that you have, we'll be more than happy to answer those questions. We have our civil engineer here tonight, our landscape architect, and our consultant for the cell tower. As Amy told you, the landscaping is phenomenal. The landscape architect has done a tremendous job. If you look at the elevations along Merced and Baldwin Park Boulevard, we think we've done a great job. And there's actually different levels of different plant colors and types and styles, so that you get this tiered effect. And then a lot of large trees, as Amy talked about. So it will look like the project has been there a while. You won't have these little tiny trees with very few plantings out in the front. We're very excited to be here in Baldwin Park. I'm very excited to be back in Baldwin Park. I was here from 1980 to 1992. My wife and I, our first house that we bought was a condo that we had built over on Walnut. And we lived in Baldwin Park for a couple of years. And so I'm very excited to be back with another project. And we look forward to working with the city and continue to work with the city on this project. So if you have any questions, we're more than happy to answer those for you.
I have a question. Selling price, average, or range, or whatever, however you state it, what is it going to be the selling price?
We think that the sales price will be, Dave, what do you think? High 3s to mid $400,000.
Any other questions?
Yes, I asked that before on the entrance. Is it possible in any way that you can reconsider, put an interest into Verizon, so they can come in through Baldwin Park Boulevard instead of Merced? And then also that the entrance for the... And then also that the entrance for the Verizon will be at, that they add more trees, or maybe taller trees alongside of it to kind of camouflage these little structures that are going up, you know, with antennas?
The companion trees that we'll be putting in there will be full-size trees that will complement the mono-eucalyptus. I don't know if you've ever driven down the 57 freeway directly across from Cal State Fullerton. There's a lot of eucalyptus trees there, and one of them is a mono-eucalyptus. You can't tell that it's a cell tower site. It's beautiful. And that was one of the questions that we had brought to city council. They made tremendous improvements on the cell towers. We had asked city council whether they preferred the monopine, because now they actually really look like a pine tree, and/or the mono-eucalyptus. And they asked us to go with the mono-eucalyptus. But if you ever get a chance to drive down across from Cal State Fullerton, there's an apartment complex there, and they have the mono-eucalyptus. And you honestly can't tell that it's a cell tower. With regards to access, the access along Baldwin Park Boulevard is much busier, that street, than the Merced is. And Merced is busy. But in dealing with the cell companies and with the city, we felt that that was the best location to come in for this development. And again, with the gates being along the side...
Push down on the top, the little...
Turning red on top of the thing. Oh, up there. Great, thank you. The gates are here and here. So this whole area allows the residents, or visitors, or the cell companies to come in and get completely off of Merced Avenue, rather than have to park and go and open a gate. They're able to pull in and get completely within the property before they come to a stop, and then have access through the gates into the development. So we're excited about that. The entry and the, there's going to be a water feature right here, and then this park area, the entry's beautiful. Again, the landscape architect has done an outstanding job, and we're very excited about the way that entrance will look.
How often is Verizon or workers going to be in that area? Is it just emergencies, or every day, or what?
Mark, about how often do you think they would come?
Once a month.
Oh, okay.
Where are they going to park?
Right in front of their facilities. There are parking spaces there. They'll let the homeowners association know when they're going to be there. They'll usually come during the time when most people are at work, and they'll come in and park directly in front of their facilities right here.
I got one more question. You know, we have different designs that we showed here. Have the city council already approved certain designs? Or are you going to go mixed, or all want? Or is it going to be a mixture of designs? You know, like, you have different designs here?
Basically, the architectural style will be the same throughout. And we did meet with a study session, a couple of study sessions that we had with city council. And this is the style that they said that they preferred. And we think that, we agree that it is something that's a little bit different, and not the usual for the city of Baldwin Park. And I think that that's one of the things that the city council members liked also, was the fact that it isn't going to be the same as everything else in town, so. But they did have an opportunity to take a look at that in our study session.
Commissioners, staff is actually anticipating, if you see the color palette, which is included in the specific plan, that the units themselves will comprise a variety of all of these five different color combinations. It's not just going to be one.
Oh, definitely, the color combinations will be varied throughout the entire project.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Anything else from the council, from the commissioners?
No, I'll just want to say one thing. Your plans are very good. I liked it very much, and I like that project very much, myself.
Thank you very much. We're excited.
Thank you.
This, I understand there will be no low-income housing in this project?
This particular development has no affordable housing included with it. That's correct.
Great. Then everybody pays property tax. It's a change.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other, anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item?
Ben Cullen, 13811 Kenmore Avenue. I have the lot adjacent to that finger that comes down to Kenmore. And I'm not real sure why you would allow the developer to build three-story high-rise condos on a 75 by basically 140-foot lot. In, on Kenmore, it's, you know, it's a single-family R1 residential neighborhood. Better plan would probably be to allow him to build two single-family residences on that lot. The emergency access gate, instead of being on Kenmore, would be in the back, where it joins the development. And you'd keep the continuity and the scale of the neighborhood. I'm not sure what the exact height of these three-story condos are, but probably in excess of 40 feet. That's, you know, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb, and just, you know, it's going to ruin the scale. And it's a nice little, I've lived there for 42 years. And there's a lot of folks who've lived there over 40 years. And I just don't see how you can allow them to build high-density, high-rise structures in a R1 neighborhood. It just doesn't seem right. And also, the developer originally said that adjacent structures to the complex, in other words, existing neighborhood houses, there would be two-story condos adjacent to them. I don't know why he's picking on me, but he's building three-story condos next to me. So that's another question I had. And, oh, let's see here. I guess I better bring this up, too. Because if you don't bring stuff up at a meeting like this, you don't get to bring it up later. During construction, and I'm talking about site work now when compaction takes place, you know, it's sandy soil there. And unless you require them to, you know, take about three foot of native soil out and bring sandy loam in for compaction purposes, they're going to be running those, or they're going to be running those roller, big roller vibrator compactors through there time and time again, trying to get 98%, which they won't do. I'm just wondering, who's going to pay for the cracks and the stucco for the existing surrounding houses? It's, I don't know if you've ever been privy to on a complex where they've done a lot of that vibrator compaction, but it sets up quite a rattle.
Sir, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I want to concur with what the gentleman had said about his absolute nightmare with inundated parking. We're having, we've had that for more than five years, six years maybe, condos that were built on Baldwin Park Boulevard, apartments, the condos directly behind them, which makes us on the third side, across the street from Sierra Vista. It's inundated. We have not been able to park in there for much more than two years. And so I concur with what your concerns are. This complex, this development is nice to Baldwin Park. I would agree with that. There's always going to be some issues. Some of the ones that I could relate to are parking issues, of course. It's limited parking, and the street is public. We cannot just cone off our section when we want to save a parking space. There will be issues. You cannot think that you can, it would be fixed with an 18th parking space. You know, in addition to when you have, those are homes, not like an apartment or a condo where you can have like a gathering, or a party, or what have you, any type of reunion. Where are those guests going to park? Because you're going to have more than 18. So there's concerns with the parking. As far as the gentleman behind me that just spoke, yeah, that's major concern, to have a single home. And then you have not only a condo, apartment, and then you have condos that are three stories. That's what I, that's what I was referring to when we're talking about what's behind this and existing now on Baldwin Park Boulevard. It's going to be very similar to this. And I just don't know that unless you're in the situation where you have a home that you can relate to some of these issues, you might just think, you just look at the outside and the income and the revenue and the taxes that, you know, come with it. There's all these other little, other people around you that have to coexist with you as well. And I think they should, you know, be taken into consideration, especially when we've been residents of 20, 30, 40, 50-some years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Norma Iriarte, 13827 Kenmore Avenue, just on the side where they have in their emergency entrance. Again, same thing that these two people before me spoke. Mainly concerned with the parking. Aside from the disruption while construction, parking is going to be a very big issue for the ones that would live there. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
My name is Dan Pragana. I live at 13735 Kenmore, at the very end. And I'm concerned the same thing, how he said. We might as well say goodbye to our parking. We'll never see parking again if this, if this thing won. Thank you. I live at 138 Kenmore. And I think there are going to be a lot of problems with parking there. And everything is about making money. I like the residential project, but I need more parking, and that house is not to be. Because that's going to look like a dark house. There's no verb, people need parking, near recreation area. Also, pedestrian can't through the driveway to Kenmore. They want to park along Kenmore. There's too many houses. I know it's, it's good for investors to make a lot of money in the city. I got a lot of people around the area. Thank you.
Edwin Borquez, 13915 Merced Avenue. This is a welcome addition to the city of Baldwin Park, a long time in coming. I've lived on Merced over 40 years, directly across the street from where this is being built. I want to thank you for touching on the project and what it brings to the city. And talking to my neighbors, we're all looking forward to this project being built. I don't have too much concerns about the parking, at least on the Merced side. You know, we all have driveways. And so I can't really touch on the Kenmore side, but on the Merced side, we all have driveways, and, you know, we don't have to deal with that. But there is one concern for Chairperson Muse and Amy and the commissioners to pass along to Public Works, and that is the accidents that happen on Merced. It's very important, if a stoplight and a traffic light is not feasible, that we put speed bumps and maybe before the curb. That curb that comes down Merced, or it's Baldwin Park Boulevard, if we could put a bump, a speed bump there, that would really alleviate a lot of these accidents. And trust me, I have seen a ton. We've seen cars flying through the air and landing in our neighbors' yards. It's pretty wild. So if we can, if anyone here can really get in touch with Public Works and say, hey, if we can't do a stoplight, at least a couple of speed bumps would really alleviate the accidents. You know, because people drink, they drive fast, they just hit that curb, they lose control. And that's my only concern. But I'm really looking forward to this project, and it's going to be a good thing for the community.
Mr. Borquez, I'll pass your concerns along to Public Works.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item?
We appreciate the comments. And Amy touched on this briefly, but of all the surrounding streets, Kenmore would be the least impacted from a parking standpoint. And not saying that nobody would possibly park there. But because there's no pedestrian access through here, anybody that parked on Kenmore would have to go up to Baldwin Park Boulevard, up to Merced, back to the entrance, walk in, and then walk to their unit. So I'm guessing that there won't be a lot of people that want that much activity. And then along Merced, there's a tremendous amount of frontage for this development if people wanted to park outside of the development. But on Kenmore, I really think that that's, you know, quite a height for most people. So they're not going to want to park on Kenmore and then have to walk all the way over to here, and then come in and walk to their particular unit.
Thank you. Amy, real quick, isn't on Merced, right in front of that, this project, isn't Merced all red as far as on the sidewalk?
I want to say a portion of it is. Maybe not all of it. Because I know that when I went out to the site, I parked further away from the corner.
Yeah, okay. Again, anyone else wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward.
Good evening. Elias Lima. I live at 13823 Kenmore Avenue. Right, see if I can point that out. It's right here. That's my backyard. So I would be very concerned about coming home and getting in my backyard and relaxing for a little bit, and having all three-story houses in the back just looking at me out the window. Kind of sad looking at this. I know they're very excited about all the money they're going to make, but just looking at it, it's not enough parking space for these units. And like he was saying, that people will not be able to walk all the way. I would if I was them, if I come to this property visiting some family or friends. I would walk, I would park on Kenmore and walk all the way around to spend the night in that property. So I think that parking will be very packed on Kenmore. Thank you.
In regards to some of the- In regards to some of the questions or concerns, the three-story location, because I see you have different colors designated as far as the different buildings, are they designated for the two-story and three-story? Okay, so where are the two-story buildings?
That unit, all of these units, and all of these units are two-story. And then I think that half of these units here are two-and-a-half story, so that we get architectural relief. They sit back and there's only a small portion because there's a deck up there. And then I think half are, you know, three-story house. But this one, all of these, all the way around are all two-story.
And then three stories?
These units in here are all three-story. And these units across here, I think that are a variety of the two-and-a-half and the three-story units. And the greatest height, I think tops out at 33 feet. One of the concerns was that he thought they would be about 40 feet tall. I think the tallest point is 33 feet.
Consistent with the plans that you have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Again, anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no further interest, I will now close the public communication. And at this point, again, are there any questions by the, or any of the commissioners to staff regarding this item? Okay.
I do have a question. I do have a concern with those neighbors that are actually pointing out the fact that some of these buildings are three stories. The visibility of them being able to see their neighbors down below. Is there anything, a retaining wall or something that can be put up to protect those neighbors from their privacy, or?
A retaining wall just holds back the property. The maximum allowable height for fences within this area is six feet.
How about maybe putting like trees or something, just to give them more of their privacy in that area, just to the neighbors on Kenmore?
That's an option that we can do along the ones that face Kenmore. We can look at them, adding some additional like cypress trees or something in the back. I do know that they have a proposed, there's not a lot of greenscape in their backyard areas, but we could probably add that as a condition if you'd like to do that.
Just to kind of give them a little bit of privacy, just to the neighbors who are concerned about looking over their property. Thank you.
Yes, isn't 33 feet is kind of common for a two-story house? Is that kind of the height for a three-story, two-story?
For three-story, yes.
Okay, Amy. Right now, on the table, what we're looking at is we're not approving the plan here at this point.
Chair, what we are looking for, because this requires a specific plan and zone change, those items are a decision made by the city council. What I am looking here tonight is just for a recommendation of approval or denial, which then we will take on to the city council. And the city council will then make the final decision on all of the entitlements and the CCO document.
Mr. Chair, and if you decide, for example, to recommend it to the city council, you can put in the staff report to city council the conditions which you discussed just now. For example, the Kenmore trees and whatever else you want to recommend to the city council.
Okay, thank you. Quick question, Amy, are there any three-story buildings, three-story homes on Kenmore?
Not that I am aware of, no.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, there is a 33-story buildings in Kenmore. The apartment, those big houses right across from Service are probably 35 feet high.
Well, that's over there.
Right across from Service, they're pretty tall.
Right, oh, about the tennis courts? Yeah, okay, I gotcha. I gotcha, okay. At this point, do anyone else has any questions in regards to the staff in regards to this agenda item? Seeing none, and then I will accept a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move this to the city council with conditions that you mentioned.
And those conditions are?
For 14-22, that would be adding greenscape and/or trees along that portion of the project to screen the Kenmore houses. And you could also suggest preferential parking on Kenmore for homeowners, if that's another, right, right. And then that would be up to the city council. And it would be a permit system in which the homeowners would get like two to three permits. And they could, it would be marked on the street by Public Works.
Oh, okay.
We've done that with other streets.
Sounds pretty good for you, Mr. Wood. All right. We have a motion to accept and to move it to the city council with the addition of the agenda items, I'm sorry, with the addition of...
Those two recommendations.
Yes, those two recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes.
For the audience, this is a city council matter, and we'll go to them next. Thank you.
Amy, next agenda item, please.
The next agenda item is the Planning Division's monthly report for November. That was included in your packet, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions to Amy on the, on the packet? Seeing none, okay, Amy, keep going.
Moving on. The second item under reports of officers is the Health and Sustainability Element monthly reports for, one report for combination of September, October, and then the other one for November of 2014. So I can answer any questions if you have any on that item as well.
Any questions? Seeing none, okay, Amy.
Moving on. Item number seven, under Council Staff Communications, Verbal Update on the Vineland Residential Care Facility. We are having the second community meeting on Monday, December 15, at the Community Center in Meeting Room 1, beginning at 6:30. The city attorney and the mayor will be in attendance at this meeting, along with staff, to answer any questions. Are there any questions? What? It starts at 6:30. The next item is the Verbal Update on the redevelopment project area overlay, or Ordinance 1290. We had the second reading of the ordinance at the December 3 city council meeting, so that ordinance will go into effect and the elimination of that language will be removed within, at the conclusion of 30 days. So that'll be January. Yes?
Mr. Wood?
Oh, what? Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I thought you had a question. The next item, the Proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. It appears that the city of Irwindale will be holding public hearings on the draft environmental impact report and all of the entitlements, starting in January. I still do not have solid dates yet, but once I do, I can get those forwarded to you for your information. And then the last item that we have is the Verbal Update on the proposed resumption of mining and subsequent reclamation of the Olive Pit, which is bordered by Olive Street, Azusa Canyon, Los Angeles Street, and Park Place. At the last city council meeting, after closed session, the mayor did indicate that we look into a contract with an attorney specializing in matters such as this, which would be the California Environmental Quality Act, and possibly challenging that. We have not done anything of that sort. However, we are looking into it at this time. So if anything does come forward, this is a monthly item that I'll just keep updating you as we go along. And that's all I have.
I have a quick comment on the MRF in Azusa, which is along Irwindale Avenue. I got a chance to drive through there, and those trucks are really, really stacking up along Irwindale. Can you imagine when the MRF in Irwindale gets started, the rock quarry gets started, and more trucks? It's gonna be a mess, and we're gonna be in the blunt of this mess. Because you know truck drivers, if they can find a shortcut, I don't care how many times you tell them you can't go a certain way, they'll go a certain way. So it's gonna be fun the next few years.
I want to make a comment also. I want to commend Gerardo and Irving. Our staff members were present at the Irwindale meetings, council meetings, and planning commission meetings. And you guys did a great job sticking up for Balden Park. Thank you.
I had to schedule them on either days we had city council or planning commission. Go figure. Yes.
Okay, at this point, I will, let's see. There's no other agenda items, so at this point, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any objections? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Hallelujah.